Good evening. My name is Sherri Carter Allen and we are excited that you have chosen to join us tonight for the Peoria Town Hall Debate that is sponsored by Collaborative Peoria and the Monday Gathering while we are streaming live from the beautiful facilities of the Frank Campbell Community Center. The next three nights, we will be presenting candidates that are running for city council seats in Peoria districts that have become the most controversial according to citizen interest. Those districts are Peoria City Council Districts 1, 2, and 3. Tonight, Town Hall Debate will focus on Council District 1. Also, as you may notice, we may have audience participation. Each candidate was allowed to invite 10 participants which have been appropriately distanced according to COVID-19 mitigation. Now, without further ado, I will introduce to you our moderator for the evening. Dr. Dawn Harris Jeffries, Ph.D., has devoted her life to believe in justice, equality, respect, and service especially for underserved girls. In 2015, Dr. Jeffries established a nonprofit, Girls Light Our Way, to provide tools for mental, physical, and nutritional wellness, self-efficacy, and literacy of power. The goal is to provide a directed pathway and R-rated agency out of poverty to improve social and economic mobility, quality, and longevity of life. She received her doctorate in Values-Driven Leadership from Benedictine University. She developed a specialized model for organizations of all kinds to promote equity for African-American girls, girls from all backgrounds experiencing poverty, racism, sexism, and classism. Dr. Jeffries is a financial advisor and chartered retirement planning counselor with Merrill Lynch. She has been in the organization for 22 years as a financial advisor in a variety of management positions which included oversight of more than $1 trillion in client assets. Dawn began her career as a bank examiner for the Federal Reserve Bank of New York. She has been featured in local newspapers, business magazines, and publications. Since moving to Peoria in 2012, she has served on the Board of Directors of the various organizations. Currently, she serves as a member of the National Council of Advisors at the Foster College of Business at Bradley University. Dawn is a member of Central Illinois Chapter of the Lynx, Inc. and Delta Sigma Theta Sorority, Inc. She also provides financial education in the community whenever possible. She and her husband, Dr. James M. Jeffries III, reside in Peoria, Illinois. Dr. Jeffries.
Thank you so much, Sherri, and thank you to our hosts for inviting me to serve. It is indeed an honor. The purpose of tonight's Town Hall Debate is to give our candidates a final opportunity to inform and educate voters regarding their political platform and clearly communicate their plans for District 1. Here are the rules of engagement. Each candidate will be given a two-minute opening statement. After the opening statements, each candidate will be given two minutes to answer each question and one minute for a follow-up response if needed. Once the time's expired, we will expect each candidate to respectfully close their statement. After we ask questions that reflect Council District 1's citizens' concerns, we will give opportunity for two audience members from Councilperson Moore's side and two audience members from Candidate Jackson's side to ask one question each to the candidate they choose. After all questions have been asked, each candidate will be given a two-minute closing statement. I will introduce you to our candidates for District 1. Incumbent Councilperson Denise Moore and Candidate Denise Jackson. Best to you both. Councilperson Moore, would you like to start with your opening statement, please?
Thank you. Am I doing it from here or from my seat? From my seat?
Your mic.
Perfect. Even better. Good evening, and thank you for allowing me this opportunity. I'd like to thank the Monday Gathering and the Collaborative for taking the time to understand that the residents of the 1st District need to have this engagement to hear about what's going on and how I differ from my opponent. There are many of you who already know me. I've been serving as your councilwoman for the last eight years, and if you look around the district, you'll see what I've done. But for those of you who don't know me, let me give you an opportunity to hear a little bit about my background. And some of you who were listening the other day may have heard this, but you can't hear it enough because it's very exciting. I'm very excited about my pedigree. I am married to Gary Moore, and we have a daughter and two grandsons, one 13 and one just turned three last week. They were both born here in Peoria. We moved to the East Bluff when we got married. Gary moved me here from Bloomington Normal, and we moved to the East Bluff. But as we looked around to buy a house, we decided that the South Side was where our home was needing to be. I currently serve as council liaison to five commissions for the city. I'm also on the Board of the PCCO, the Community Action Agency, the Downtown Development Corporation, and the State of Illinois Small Business Development Board. I'm a member, as is Denise, of St. Paul Baptist Church. I'm glad to see that you are all here today. I thank you. I just asked, as we move forward, I encourage everyone to listen for qualifications. I believe you may hear very few of them from my opponent, but you will hear a lot of promises from my opponent. Now, make no mistake, I like Denise Jackson. She's a very nice person, and she really can bake, and I can't, so that's okay. But it's not about who we like and who we don't like sometimes. It's about who can get the job done. Thank you.
All right. My name is Denise Jackson. If you would like to read my resume, you can go to Denise Jackson, Peoria City Council, District 1. But I am a lifelong resident of Peoria. I've lived on the South Side all my life with the exception of 11 years when I worked and lived in upstate New York. I came back to Peoria in 1999 to help my mother at the time and decided after she passed away to stay in the house that she and my dad purchased in 1959 because it's a beautiful home and I like the South Side. I spent 19 years working at WEEK. I graduated from Bradley University. I am a former board member of the Tri-County Urban League. I am a second vice president of South Side Community United for Change. We are a coalition of neighborhood associations on the South Side, and I am president of Newtown Neighborhood Association. I've been president for about 10 years now. I am interested in running for the 1st District because I have a vested interest in the community. I grew up in the community. I remember when it was a strong, stable, working-class community, and unfortunately, I have witnessed the economic demise. And so there are many of us in the 1st District who have been waiting for the revitalization of our community that was promised back in the late 1970s. We thought we would begin to see some of that with the election of Councilwoman Moore, but quite frankly, there is the consensus that not a whole lot has been done. So I decided to seek the seat because I felt like this was the next logical step for me. I'd like to do more in terms of fixing up our infrastructure, providing new affordable housing. We have the most number of vacant lots in any community in the city of Peoria.
Thank you. Our first question is to Councilperson Moore. Can you tell us why you're seeking reelection to the office of Councilperson for District Number 1, and what do you offer that Candidate Jackson does not?
Well, let me start with what I offer that I think is different. I came to this role with 17 years of experience in the insurance industry where I helped businesses and our agents write businesses all over the country. I supervised that department of 217 people to be able to engage those agents across the country to do what I indicated that we did. After that 17 years, I was trained to be a State Farm agent to further, at the grassroots level, help people. I left State Farm and came over to Peoria and served as a financial advisor for Mass Mutual Insurance and Financial Services. And there, I met with people every single day in their homes, watched them struggle. And my main goal was to help people to provide insurance so that if something were to happen to someone they love, they didn't have to have a fundraiser to bear them or to go out on GoFundMe and that kind of thing. The reason I want to get back into this seat is because there's a lot of work that is yet to be done. You see that right now, Western Avenue, $12 million is happening. That went on the list four or five years ago. It got in line, and now it came up to be completed. I've got a fire station, the first fire station to be built in Peoria in 25 years coming up. You may look over and see that on Folkways Avenue in front of Treewind School. After 17 years of people asking for it to be completed, this student, who was a student in 2001, graduated and moved on, and nobody did anything. And that was before I moved here. People born and raised here who seek this office now didn't do a thing for this young man, and I did in 2017. So there's a lot. I'm the only councilmember to ever bring a grocery store to the South Side. There are a lot of other things that you're hearing me talk about that are happening in the South Side on the 1st District because, believe it or not, the 1st District is not just the South Side. It's the North Valley. It's the downtown in the Warehouse District. Thank you.
Candidate Jackson, can you tell us why you're seeking election for the office of Councilperson of District 1, and what can you offer that Councilperson Moore does not?
I didn't initially plan on running for the city council. I had been kind of content working with South Side Community United for Change. As a matter of fact, about five years ago, South Side Community United for Change had a neighborhood academy, and one of the goals that came out of that neighborhood academy was revitalization of Western Avenue. And it was some of us who grew up in this community who were familiar with Western Avenue when it was a business district. We informed Councilwoman Moore. She obviously didn't grow up here. She was in Chicago. So we told her about all the businesses that were on Western Avenue. We told her that we believed that if we could get Western Avenue revitalized, with her help, obviously she was a city councilwoman, we believed that maybe some more businesses would come to Western Avenue. So we asked her to help us get Western Avenue redeveloped. She obviously took the decision to the city council, but unfortunately, we have watched the same project be completed in five or six other neighborhoods throughout the city, and nothing happened in a community that has not seen any economic redevelopment in at least 40 or 50 years. So it was the frustration behind seeing that project put on delay after delay after delay after delay that propelled me into the 1st District City Council race. The difference between myself and Councilwoman Moore, I listen to people. My agenda represents the wants and needs of the people in the 1st District. I don't have a nonprofit to run. I intend to get the things done that the people in the 1st District have said they want it done: street repair, housing, jobs. Those are the things people in the 1st District have been talking about for at least 20 or 30 years, and they continue to talk about it. Unfortunately, over the last seven and a half years, there's been a serious disconnect.
Councilperson Moore, would you like to?
Yes. I'm glad to hear Ms. Jackson say it was five years ago, that's about 2015, 2016, that they got together to talk about Western. So that was 2016. In 2013, when Aldi's closed, and there were a number of you in the room here, not Ms. Jackson, but some other of you who were here, we protested in front of Aldi in December of 2013 so that we could find out why they were closing and taking the grocery store out of there. It was in 2013 that Aldi told me that Western was a problem, and that's when I started looking into it. It wasn't 2015 or 2016. It was 2013. And then Ms. Jackson said that it was the 20 or 30 years that they've been watching things degrade here. I wasn't living here to have the opportunity to help you, but when I came here, I did get the opportunity to help you, and I wish people who were already here, born and raised, would have done that. I stepped up. Thank you.
Can I respond to that?
Yes.
I could not participate in the protest at Aldi's in 2013 because I was a reporter for Channel 25, so that would have been a serious conflict of interest, but I was well aware of it. So my involvement had to be behind the scenes because, obviously, as a reporter, you cannot throw yourself into news stories. I was very much concerned, but I had limited capacity in terms of my involvement because sometimes I would be asked to cover these stories. So I could not actively participate. But we had a neighborhood academy in November, September of 2016. I have the paperwork at home, and one of the goals that came out of that was the redevelopment of Western Avenue. I wrote a position paper on Western Avenue because initially, the plan was to do more of it further up where the businesses were, but the city decided they didn't want to do that, so they shifted.
Thank you. Candidate Jackson, as a longtime resident and activist for Peoria South Side, can you tell us what organizations that you've worked with and the specific projects that you've been involved in to accomplish better conditions for District 1?
Well, I will tell you, as a Neighborhood Association president, we routinely hold cleanups. I've been involved in the Great American Cleanup probably for the last 10 years, okay? I organize it. I work with the Dream Center. They bring down volunteers. I worked with Public Works. I routinely work with Public Works in terms of helping elderly people get assistance with debris, anything that might be needed on their property. I routinely do that. South Side Community United for Change, back in 2018, decided to hold a 5K walk. We wanted to do something to bring lots of people together. I chaired that committee, and we also wanted to raise some money. So I was responsible for chairing that committee. In the two years that we hosted the event, we raised upwards of $10,000. I invited everybody. We brought the police department, the sheriff. We got donations. We were fundraising. We solicited from everybody, but we didn't get a donation from Councilwoman Moore. In the two years that we hosted the event, the sheriff came, the police chief came, the fire department came, residents came, and we walked, and we were trying to create some pride throughout our community, but Councilwoman Moore didn't show up, okay? So that's two of the things I've done. I've also been involved in fundraising. I've committed a lot of my time to South Side Community United for Change because that's my family. I love my neighborhood. I love my community. So I have just embraced that organization, especially since I have left the news business, especially since my mom has passed away. I've had more time to commit to it. So that is how I have, anything we've done, I've been involved with it. We've had...
Thank you. Thank you. Councilperson Moore, as a two-term incumbent, you've been criticized for not being transparent and not creating projects that have improved the socioeconomic conditions of members of the district, namely, the South Side of Peoria. Please share with us the specific projects and organizations you've worked with that have improved the conditions of the South Side of Peoria during your tenure.
Thank you for the question. Transparency, that means communication. Anyone who has Comcast on Channel 22, you can turn to that channel any day and night, and you will see the city communicating right to you what we're doing. That didn't happen because the city thought it was a great thing to do. It took me four years of trying to convince the city manager to establish that channel. It hardly cost us anything, but you can go to Channel 22 right now, day or night, and you can see what the city is doing. I think that's transparency. Transparency. On the radio station that I started here, 106.3 FM, shameless plug, I started that radio station for the minority community because I felt there wasn't enough information getting out to the community. And so regularly on that station, we have a First District update about what's happening in the community. And so those are the things that deal with transparency. As far as organizations, I started the Minority Business Development Center. At the Minority Business Development Center, which is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, we provide minority contractor development training for free. We provide IT training for free. We provide business development training for free. The Minority Business Development Center, the Black Business Alliance, the WPNV radio station, those are things not even connected to the city that I do because I love my people. I love all people, and I want folks to come through, get this training so that they can come out of poverty. That's what it's all about, doing things to bring people out of poverty so that they have a good quality of life and they can wake up every morning proud of where they live. Thank you.
Would you like to rebut?
No, not at all.
Okay. All right. Can I, I'll do follow-up questions later. I want to dig into those a little bit more. Candidate Jackson, we'll go on to question three. You've been criticized for only focusing on the South Side of Peoria during your campaign. Please share with the citizens of District 1 your specific strategy to revitalize and attract businesses to the downtown and riverfront area that you'll work to be a catalyst for in terms of economic growth.
Well, I have also talked a lot about the North Valley. That's where I started my campaigning. As a matter of fact, I have a three-step action plan that, number one, deals with lighting, upgrading, and putting lighting in areas where it doesn't exist. Number two deals with the rain gardens. And the third idea I actually got after communicating with the folks in the North Valley, and that was the issue of illegal dumping. You know, it's been a persistent problem regardless of how many cleanups we have. People come back and dump tires in the same place. As a matter of fact, last June 27th, when I arranged a cleanup, we had five dumpsters, but our volunteers collected over 1,000 tires that had been dumped in and around the community. So in my conversations with the residents in the North Valley, I found out that they do have signs posted. They told me that once they got the signs posted, the illegal dumping stopped. So we would like to take that idea, duplicate it in the South Side, maybe put lighting in alleys because we found out that is the place where people come and dump tires. We also found out that one of the things, they have a farmer's market. So we've talked about collaborating. SCUC has had a farmer's market too, so we've talked about collaborating on that project as well. So I have talked a lot about the entire 1st District. Unfortunately, it's the North Valley and the South Side that were not the big beneficiaries of the $30 to $40 million in federal dollars that the city got and poured into the Warehouse District. So my contention is now it's time to spread some of that economic development to these adjacent communities, the North Valley and the South Side. Then hopefully, we'll begin to see some of the ripple effect that the Warehouse District benefited from when the city got the $40 million.
Thank you. Perhaps in the rebuttal, I could get some specific projects and ideas that you want to have to attract businesses. Thanks. Councilperson Moore, during your tenure, the Warehouse District and Riverfront continues to show residential and business innovation and growth. However, between the Caterpillar Exodus and the pandemic, downtown has been left barren. While looking forward to the OSF administrative offices and they are generating the opportunity for surrounding businesses, what is your strategic plan to attract businesses to the downtown area that will launch goers and shoppers and tourists in general?
Well, first, let me thank Ms. Jackson for acknowledging the signs that are posted in the North Valley. I'm responsible for that. In fact, there was a black architect, web designer, who we enlisted. Her name is Denise Hall, and she did those signs. And yes, they are coming to the South Side, so thank you for acknowledging that. That's, I'm responsible for that. So as far as the downtown and the Warehouse District development, the role of city government is to make the environment conducive for businesses to come in. For example, we talk a lot about grocery stores in the 1st District. There are no cities or municipalities that own grocery stores that I'm aware of. Rather, what the cities and municipalities do is make the environment conducive for those businesses to come in. Let me give you just one example. Before we even started with Western, because I had been talking about it to everybody, Dollar General, built on Western from the ground up. So that is what my specific goals are, is to continue to provide incentives for businesses to come. You've got Papa Shop downtown now. You've got Gone X Throwing downtown. You've got Zion Coffee downtown. You've got any number of businesses that have already come to the downtown and Warehouse District because we have made incentives available so that we share in the cost. We hold back on charging them for taxes so they can get their business up and running. And then once that developmental agreement comes through, then they start paying their full flavor of taxes. Those are the things city governments can do. We can't open a grocery store, but we can certainly, as I did before, make the area conducive for a private business to come in. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Jackson, would you like to use this time to talk about specific projects and plans?
Well, and I am not anti-business. My whole contention is we have got to deal with some foundational issues to make the communities attractive for businesses such as Western Avenue, which used to be a busy business hub. And when I moved back to Peoria in 1999, Walgreens had opened up a new store right down on Western and Howett, and it wasn't a year later. They shut it down and went less than a half a mile up the hill. And my thing is, the community, Western, had deteriorated so bad that it was clear that businesses weren't interested in coming there because of all of the blight. So my argument is until we address some basic foundational issues, infrastructure, providing incentives for businesses.
Thank you. Councilperson Moore, would you like to...
Actually, she just made the case that I made a few minutes ago. We are providing incentives for business. We are providing infrastructure. We redid Washington Street some years ago. Unfortunately, I wasn't living here when Walgreens moved and moved out. Perhaps people who were living here could have helped in that regard. But now that I am here, I'm doing everything I can as a former business owner. I used to have a business in the Contemporary Art Center on the first floor for three years called More Art on Water. And so I've been a business owner down here. I know the problem of parking, that folks always are trying to find a place to park. I know the problem of getting in and out when the train is going by and your car's on the other side. And so there's a lot of things that we are working with in the city to try to alleviate some of those issues, to bring the incentives to encourage businesses to come here. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Jackson, District 1 has been left without a full-service grocery store, and we have the least number of pharmacies in this district per capita to serve the citizens of the South Side and the North Side of District 1. What have you done to advocate for change regarding this disservice?
With regards to a grocery store?
Without the full-service grocery store and no pharmacy.
Well, I have been involved with South Side Community United for Change, which has hosted two farmer's markets. We have also talked about engaging vendors like Aldi, I'm sorry, Alwin Brothers or Rabors in the development of a hub that we'd like to see possibly somewhere along Western Avenue. And so I think until we are able to, as I said, deal with some foundational issues, then it's going to be kind of hard to bring full service. issues, then it's going to be kind of hard to bring full service if the roads are jacked up. I lived in, when I lived in Rochester, New York, my, our mayor at the time was Bill Johnson. And right as I moved away from Rochester, there was the argument about a lack of a grocery store. Bill Johnson was very successful. We had Tops there. Tops was like Kroger's here. And there was the argument that, you know, we need a grocery store in this neighborhood on Monroe Street. Well, I think if you've got the right leadership and the right support for it, you can make it happen. Mayor Johnson was able to get a brand-new Tops grocery store built in the heart of downtown Rochester on Monroe Street in a diverse neighborhood where it was so desperately needed. So I'm excited about a new mayor coming to town. I think there are some possibilities with St. Francis being, having its headquarters downtown. I hope that that will bring a lot of people downtown. I think there's a possibility that we might be able to consider the possibility of a grocery store downtown. Jimmy John's has survived all these years. Caterpillar's headquarters is gone. St. Francis is coming. I think there's some real potential for bringing some more people downtown. If we could get St. Francis renovated and fix up the roads, that might be a possibility is a grocery store could survive down there. But we've got to have the right leadership.
Thank you. We'll talk about advocacy in, in your rebuttal. Counselperson Moore. If you could answer the same question, we don't have a full-service grocery store and per capita, we have the least number of pharmacies. What have you done and what are you doing to progressively address this disservice?
Well, I want to once again thank my opponent, Ms. Jackson, for mentioning Alwin and Sons because prior to my bringing Save-A-Lot to Western, we talked to Alwin and Sons about opening at that location, having a satellite. And they decided that it was too close in proximity to where they were already based, that they thought it would take some of the customers that were coming from the South Side to them away from them. So thank you for mentioning that. We've already done that. What, what we also did, we've, I've talked to, with Dr. Leslie McKnight's help, we've talked to every grocery chain in the region, in the Midwest region. Now, you can talk to those in California, but they're not up here, so it won't make a difference. So we talked to every single one of them, twice. We went back to Save-A-Lot for the third time and they said, okay, we'll give it a try. And they did. I've been the only council member to ever bring a grocery store to the South Side. And I'm convinced I can do it again. And that does, and when you talk about the fact that they came here with the promise that Western was going to be done, it wasn't even started yet. But they knew it was coming because they saw it on our agenda. Dollar General built. Western wasn't even started yet, but they knew it was coming because I talked to them. So I talked to these businesses to let them know what is on the agenda. They can see what's on the city roadmap and that's where they make the decisions to come. So those are specific things that I've done and will continue to do to bring groceries to the First District, not just the South Side. And a little unknown fact, Save-A-Lot indicated they would have opened a grocery store in the North Valley had there been a building for us to, to place them in. Recently, you saw that the Western Avenue building was shot down. I tried to buy that with TIF money as an incentive to bring a grocery store. Because of misinformation, that did not get passed. But we're going to try it again. Thank you.
Can I respond to that?
Absolutely, please.
Well, being that you talked to Alwins, I, I would suggest that, recommend that you talk to Rabers. They are in the process of rebuilding and I think they would be more open to the idea. But as for the old Save-A-Lot building, Councilwoman Moore, South Side Community United for Change has asked you on numerous occasions to be a part of any discussions that take place with regards to the Save-A-Lot building. And the board felt like they were just kept in the dark about it because after all, they did host the farmer's markets there. So quite obviously, they wanted to be a part of any discussions. They've also visited other grocery co-ops. So we wanted to work with you in the process, but again, and again, and again, nobody knew about your plans and, and we were told by the city manager that you wanted to open up another community center. Well, that's what we were told now, but you did not talk to us as we had asked you. So that's a problem.
Thank you. Counselperson Moore.
This is the plan that was presented first to South Side Community United for Change. And only presented, they are mentioned in here because they were surveyed for this plan. I am a founding member of the South Side Community United for Change. I've attended almost every meeting. And at every meeting, I'm allowed, it used to be only two minutes, but now they've expanded the time that they allow me to give a report about what's going on in the city of Peoria. Every single month, I give a report about what's going on in the city of Peoria. Many times, Ms. Jackson is not there, so perhaps she would have missed it, missed those updates. And quite frankly, everybody can't be everywhere at this, all at the same time, all the time. So I get it. People miss things. I miss things myself. So that's okay. I've asked SCUC time and time again to take minutes so that people who miss it, they can understand and hear what was discussed. And so I am very happy about what I've done.
Thank you.
Can I respond to that?
No, next time, next time.
Okay, because that's, that's not true.
Okay, we'll talk again. Counselperson Moore. Citizens keep hearing about available monies through tax increment financing, the TIF, and council district block grants, the CDBG. Can you explain how and if these grants can be utilized for improving the conditions of the deteriorated streets and taking down abandoned deteriorated structures in our older neighborhoods? You want me to repeat it?
Well, no, I've heard the question, but it's, the question doesn't fit because, so let me just clarify. You have community development block grant funds. Those funds come the, from the federal government. Whoever writes the checks, writes the rules. The federal government tells us how we can use those money. Let me give you an example. I serve as the, the council liaison on the CDBG Public Services Advisory Commission. And what that commission does, we provide funds to neighborhood associations, to not-for-profit organizations under various categories. The government tells us how we can use that money. So the first part of your question about CDBG, that's separate from TIF. TIF funds, there's a 100-page TIF law here in the state of Illinois. TIF law tells you how you can and cannot use those funds. Some of the funds can be used for the purposes you described. Let me give you an example of TIF funds. There was a suggestion that we should use a million dollars, a million dollars out of the TIF funds to take down Harrison School. A school that the, a school that the, the school district sold for $10. Now, now hear me. A million dollars to take down something that was sold for $10 and turn it into a community garden. A million dollars to take down something that costs $10 to put in a community garden. That building needs to come down. And we're going to the federal government, we've been doing it for a number of years now, asking the federal government for funds to take the, not only Harrison, Old Harrison School down, but the McKinley School down also. Just like with your house, if trash goes, blows in your yard and you're responsible for picking it up, you might be a little upset about that. Those schools were dumped on the city. Now we're responsible for taking care of it. And we are because I try to make it safe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Candidate Jackson.
Could you repeat that question?
I'm gonna, right now. Please share with us your strategic plan to address the deteriorated infrastructure in District One and the abandoned structures that cause danger and blight to the surrounding communities of District One. So we want specifically your strategic plan.
Well, I, I think it's necessary, well, when we're talking about the roads, I think it's necessary, President Biden has talked about an infrastructure plan. And unfortunately, last year, when Governor Pritzker put forth his Capitol bill, we hadn't seen a Capitol bill in almost 10 years. The First District Councilwoman did not try to get any money to fix up any of these state roads. Her response has been, instead of, well, we've got all these state roads, put it on the wish list. Well, if we've got roads that haven't been touched in 40 and 50 years and the governor is offering, offering a $45 billion capital bond, ba, Capitol bill, it becomes necessary to go after that money. I will go after federal dollars. I realize the city has a budget crunch. I will go after federal dollars. I think until we address our infrastructure problems, we can't go any further. We, we can't do anything. So I will go after federal dollars. I will also work with the National Resource Network that came to Peoria in 2016 with, with the hopes that the city would redevelop undeveloped neighborhoods. And yes, maybe Councilwoman Moore was involved in that process. Thank you for doing it. But somebody dropped the ball. Okay? So I don't plan on reinventing the wheel. We want to revisit those areas, National Resource Network. We're going to go after federal dollars and we're going to fix up our roads. And we're going to bring residents into the conversation about housing. Residents in the First District need to have input in all decisions affecting them. So before I would say, this is what I want to do. We've been having conversations with individuals. So I think it's necessary to bring those individuals who are impacted by those plans to the conversation. I can't say that we're going to put it here or put it there because we need to hear from the folks who live in the First District first.
Thank you. Counselperson Moore, would you like to respond?
Thank you. And thank you once again for mentioning the National Resource Network. We brought, I brought the National Resource Network here. And they went around to the communities and they talked to people. So thank you for acknowledging that they were here and they did good work because that's what I brought them here to do. As far as requesting federal monies, federal monies have already been requested and they continue to be requested. Federal monies are what provided the lion's share of replacing the Martha Arthur Street Bridge. That was mostly federal money. Federal money was used, is being used on the Western Avenue project. That's federal monies. Federal monies is being given to us to remediate the soil in the building at what's, what used to be called the Tabor property is down deep on Southwest Adams. So federal money, cities cannot survive without federal money. So we're not asking for federal money. Something's wrong. And as far as a wish list, the city manager would have never said that he didn't ask for it. We always ask.
Thank you. Okay. Candidate Jackson, as you know, there cannot be equality without socioeconomic equity. Black residents in Peoria have one of the highest poverty rates in the state. The median income is $28,000, which is 46% of white residents' median income. Poverty rate is 34%, 34.5% compared to 9.3% for white Americans. And I would also venture to say that Peoria is one of the most segregated communities in the country. I think we're sixth. So as a councilperson, how will you work to, work toward reversing that trend? And how will you lead other elected officials, community leaders, and concerned citizens to participate?
Well, thank you for the question. Since I've announced my candidacy, I've had people of all races, people who don't live in the First District say, I want to work with bringing about some parity, some fairness to this socioeconomic problem. I think folks are open to conversations, especially in light of what's happened nationwide last year. And, and they're in all race and socioeconomic groups. I think it's important to have dialogue with all, especially at City Hall. Because a lot of times, people give lip service to diversity. And, and so I think it's important to have conversations because when it comes time to right some wrongs, people won't, won't have a problem because, you know, money is going in one community and not another. Okay? That's, that's why it's important to talk about it, to bring people to understand that when you've had a community that has not had any type of economic development in 40 and 50 years, that's like a child that has been neglected. And so it's starving. And so we have to bring everybody into the conversation and we have to right some wrongs. And I think it, most importantly, it, it has to happen at City Hall with the leadership because that's where the decisions are made.
Okay. All right. Counselperson Moore. Allow me to restate the question.
Thank you.
As you know, there cannot be equality without socioeconomic equity. Black residents in Peoria have one of the highest poverty rates in the state with a median income of $28,000, which is 46% of white residents' median income. The poverty rate is 34.5% compared to 9.3% for white Peorians. And we are up at the sixth most segregated town in the country. So as a two-term councilperson, what actions have you taken to reverse this trend? And how have you tried to influence other councilpersons to support your efforts?
The description you gave of Peoria is the backdrop that my husband moved me here to. I wasn't living here, as has been indicated, when those things were occurring. People who were living here were doing little or nothing about it. Let me rephrase that. My opponent was doing little or nothing about it because there are a lot of people who are still here, who are in the fight all the time, trying to right these wrongs. And with the strong support of the NAACP, I led the effort to bring our very first chief diversity officer here. You may remember Dr. Mohammed. He came here with the express purpose of addressing some of the inequities that you indicated. Also, I'm the only city council member that you will ever hear or have ever heard ask with every city contract where there's construction work going on, what is the minority participation and, and how did we get to that point? In fact, when we redid Folkers Avenue in front of Treewind School, I took nine months to get that done. We spent over a million dollars to make that beautiful for the children because it's all about the kids coming up. There was 28% minority participation on that project. Herefore, the city's participation was only 18%. But I rode that thing like a horse because we needed more of our people right here in O5 working. And we had 28% participation. So on city-paid projects, we can do that. On federal-paid projects, they write the checks, they write the rules, but we can fight them. And we are doing that. Thank you.
Can I respond to that?
Absolutely.
Yeah. You know, a lot of what has happened in Peoria is a result of federal policies. Economists have written books about this. These are federal, these, this is all trickled down from federal policies that were developed in the late 70s, this, that were designed basically to keep poor people and black people in poverty. This is why it's important to raise the dialogue and to have these conversations. Because until and unless these policies are changed, you continue to hire people and they continue the same practices. Yes, we had a diversity director, but I was told he left his job because he did not get support staff. Now, if he had have been a white person and, and he needed some additional support staff, and I can give you an example of that, that, those staffers would have been hired. But I was told that he left his job because he didn't, he didn't have any help. And how can you perform your job as the diversity director if you don't have a staff to work with you?
Thank you. Thank you. Counselperson.
Actually, I spoke to the diversity officer and I knew exactly why he left. And it wasn't what I heard, it's who I talked to. I talked to him. He was offered a lot more money to go somewhere else. And who among us, if we had an opportunity for that company to move you, set you up with a great job and pay you more money? He decided to take the money. Thank you.
Okay. Counselperson Moore, as you know, the city of Peoria will be hiring a new chief of police. Even though the city manager is responsible, responsible for the hiring, the council's input is part of the process. What is the strongest attribute you feel he or she must have to successfully serve in this position?
That person has to come here with qualifications. He can be the nicest person in the world, wherever he is or she is. They have to be qualified. I want to see that they have engaged the community to do not just the standard policing, but community-based policing, what we're trying to do here. That person has to come in here and show proven stra- That person has to come in here and show proven strategies for what that person has done in those communities. How they, which organizations did they engage? They have to engage not just those folks who are over a certain age, but it's our children that they have to engage. They have to have their police officers getting out of the car and walking the community, not just riding by and maybe waving. They have to get out and talk to people. That's how you get to know the community. Right now, the city of Peoria, when we have police cadets, we had a pilot program just recently where those cadets came on board and they came into code enforcement. And while they were in code enforcement, doing code enforcement work, they were driving through the different communities, getting out and talking to people, understanding what different neighborhood needs were. So when it was time for them to become, to go to police training, they were so much further ahead in understanding how to work with the community. That's what I want to see in our next police chief, that kind of community engagement. It's all about the residents and what they need and what they want. Thank you.
Counsel, excuse me, candidate Jackson, please.
Well, Councilwoman Moore brings up a very good point. I think that's important, everything she said. I think it's also important to have someone who has experience in bringing the police department and communities together in positive events, positive events. We, when we conducted our 5K walk, we had police officers, we had firefighters, and we had young people together. It's important to have someone who's not afraid to get engaged with the community, who's not afraid to engage with people who don't look like him, who's not afraid to work with women and people who are maybe of a different race because we've heard about problems like that. So I think it's important to have somebody who, yes, obviously is qualified, but is not afraid to become engaged with the community and who will work with the community.
Would either of you like to rebut or shall I move on?
You can move on.
Thank you. As a disclaimer, please be advised, in no way does the following question suggest that reparations for systemic racism that has plagued the African-American communities since 1619 can be resolved through revenues from the sales of cannabis. However, the city council of Evanston, Illinois, has approved the nation's first reparations program for black residents whose families have been impacted by the effects of decades of discriminatory housing practices. The first initiative of the $10 million plan is the Restorative Housing Reparations Program. That would contribute up to $25,000 for housing per eligible resident with the funding from 3% on recreational marijuana sales. With that, candidate Jackson, what are your views on this policy, such as a thing, such as a thing implemented in Peoria?
Yeah, I read about that. I was, well, pleasantly surprised, but I, you know, you have to educate people about reparations because quite honestly, it's not, it's one thing to award the money, but if people don't know why you're doing it, then it's just another, you know, way to get check and, and, and continue in whatever you continue in. But I like the fact that they're going to put it towards housing. But I think along with that, with any program like that, there needs to be education. There really does need to be education about why this is happening. And yes, we do need to right some wrongs, but I think education, raising awareness has to be with everything we do. Because you'd be surprised how many of us, how many of our, how many people don't know about reparations, okay? So we've got to educate not only black people, but we've got to educate everybody else, whites and everyone as well, about why this is so important. So that moving forward, you know, we'll, we'll build better relationships and folks will have a greater understanding. And hopefully, hopefully, we will never repeat some of the same mistakes that have caused these types of things to happen.
Councilperson.
Thank you. Several years ago, in Washington DC, at the National League of Cities Conference, I met that alderwoman. It was an African-American female who brought that to the forefront. And she had a session on how she get that done. And so it's more than just about talking to our community, but finding out what, how other communities were successful in doing that. What she shared with me was that this was not something that she woke up one morning and decided to put on the city council floor and it was approved. She said there were years of behind the scenes navigating and negotiating. If anyone has ever visited Evanston, I'm sure many of you have probably visited Evanston, Illinois. If you have, then you know Evanston is night and day from Peoria. Evanston probably has an average income of well over six figures. The lowest-priced home in Evanston is probably several hundred thousand dollars. Not every one of them, but most of them.
Thank you. Would you like to? Do you want to elaborate more?
Yes. And so when, when she was telling me about reparations, she said that they had to go to every community organization, not just African-American, but other organizations to explain how the funds would be used, where the funds were coming from. They weren't coming from the city budget, as you indicated. They are coming from sales of cannabis. And with that, those folks were able to say, oh, well, that's not coming from my property taxes, it's not coming from my sales taxes, you're getting it from those other people, then you can do whatever you want to do with it, as long as we can still get some of it. That's why they're only getting 3%. So that is a model that is worth investigating. But also, as Ms. Jackson indicated, you need to educate folks about what to do with that money. You've probably saw in some news reports what folks receive $1,400 stimulus checks and some of the things that they did with the funds probably could have been done differently.
Thank you. Okay. We will now ask two representatives from candidate Jackson's side to come to the microphone. You will each ask one, you will ask each, excuse me, one candidate to the, to either candidate. You will ask one question to either candidate. Once you've asked your question, please be seated and the candidate will have two minutes to answer and one minute for the other candidate to provide a response. Representative for candidate Jackson, please.
Good evening. My name is Monique Ferguson and I'm sitting here listening to this debate and my mind goes back. Growing up here in Peoria, all I know is 61605. My grandfather was Oscar B. Penn, senior. When you heard of John Gwynn for the NAACP, my grandfather was the right hand with John Gwynn. I watched my grandfather sit on the city council for 12 years and did not miss one meeting. I recently moved back to Houston, back to Peoria from Houston three years ago. I've gone 25 years. My question is to Councilwoman Moore, my business of coming back here throughout the years and visiting and my father, who still has his house on 61605. I watched the structure of MacArthur Street being built and my question to you is why or is there a reason why there was not a communication with District One and District Two? That MacArthur did not have a flow going up, it just stopped, I guess, right where District One ends or begins. But there was not a communication or a flow that MacArthur has a smooth transition going up and down with all of the, I guess, the potholes and what have you. So my question is, is there a reason why there was not a communication with District One, District Two, that they could come together and complete MacArthur Hill or MacArthur Highway?
Okay, so there's a clarifying question. Please wait for us for a second.
Ms. Ferguson, are you talking about from where the bridge stops up to Martin Luther King, up through Moss Avenue?
Yes.
Thank you. I just wanted to be clear. Excellent question. Because it has nothing to do with District One or District Two. Unfortunately, and this is weird in this town, that that's a state route from where the bridge stops, as you described, up to Moss Avenue, that's owned by the state. And we can't do, only thing we can do there is patch it. But we've been trying to get federal funds and get the, our state legislators to, in fact, both Councilwoman Grab and I have been trying to get our state legislators to convince their colleagues to use the money from the state to fix that. So it's not owned by the city. So the city can, we can, we can't even do anything with it if we wanted to besides patch it because we need the state's permission. And so that's why that smooth transition is not, is not there. And I agree with you, it's a hot mess. Thank you.
Do you want to talk about the transparency and notify? Her question was also about notifying, so you have one minute.
Well, she talked about notifying District One and District Two. Well, I'm District One and Councilwoman Grab is District Two. And at my monthly updates, we talk about the different road things that are coming through and, and so there is transparency because the, both council members were involved in discussing that. I know he takes it back to his colleague, his constituents, and I take it back to ours, especially those who have businesses up and down that street because they are always there every day. So thank you for the question, Ms. Ferguson.
Thank you. Candidate Jackson, would you like to add a follow-up response to that? Okay. Thank you. Okay. We will ask, well, is there another representative from candidate Jackson's side that would want to ask a question? Okay. We will now ask two representatives from Councilperson Moore's side to come to the microphone. You will each ask one question to the other, to either candidate. Once you've asked your question, please be seated and the candidate will have two minutes to answer and one minute, one minute for the other candidate to give a response.
This is for candidate Jackson. In the black community, we have what's been called the crabs in a barrel or Willie Lynch mentality. That's where we pull someone down who is successful. With Denise Moore, we see things getting done. Why should we vote for someone who can offer only promises versus Denise Moore who has a proven track record?
Well, I look at, I drive around every year. I drive around, all around Peoria. Seven and a half years and then five years to get Western done and then the other six or seven communities have gotten that done, done, finished, completed. There is the consensus that not much has happened. Okay? Come to my neighborhood, look, come to my neighborhood at night, it's real dark, alleys are, it's unsafe. So I disagree with you because I, as a neighborhood association president, I talk to a lot of people. And I, when I lived away, well, of course, she was not in the, in the seat at that time, but there's been a lot of tearing down, but we don't, we don't have an inventory of new affordable homes. And we've seen it in the North District, North Valley neighborhood, but the South Side has more vacant lots than any neighborhood. And consequently, people can't move to the South Side if they want to buy a house because there's no inventory of new or affordable homes. So there's the consensus among people, at least that I have listened to, that nothing's been done. There's been tear down, tear down, tear down, tear down, but we don't see progress. And sometimes, unfortunately, people become apathetic. I had a guy tell me last week, oh, no, no, I don't want to vote, I don't want to vote. And I said, you know, and there's the consensus that, well, they're going to do what they want to do anyway. And so there's the feeling that Councilwoman Moore has done a few good things, but as I said again, come to my neighborhood at night, I'll show you how dark it is and I'll show you all the vacant lots around. And, you know, we pay money into fees and we want, we want accountability.
Thank you. Councilperson Moore.
There's a reason why you have vacant lots. Because the building on, the buildings, the houses that were there were so dilapidated that they were a health danger to the children who like to see what's in there. And so, yes, I went through and over the last five years, I've brought in a million dollars to the South Side, just the South Side, to tear down these dangerous houses. I'd rather see grassy land there for kids to play on than an old dilapidated house. So that's a problem. If you want to know about more than, I do appreciate Ms. Jackson talking about some of the things that I've done. I do appreciate that. Thank you. Go down, go out to webs, my website, www.moorforpeoria.com. M-O-O-R-E, the number four, peoria.com. And you will see a list of things that have happened since I've been in office. I would share them with you here, but they are too numerous to name. And it only suits someone who is trying to make it look differently that they don't acknowledge them. Thank you.
A very brief follow-up question. Do you have your strategic plans and things of that nature in terms of what you want to do on your website as well?
Yes. My action plan is on the website.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Closing arguments or do we, do we have, I'm sorry, one more question. I apologize for Councilperson Moore.
This question is for Ms. Jackson. Ms. Jackson, are you taking credit for the Western Avenue project? And will you admit that Councilwoman Moore got that project started and that the only delay was COVID-related when the bidding was pushed back from July to November of last year?
I'm not taking credit for it. What I said earlier was Western Avenue evolved out of a neighborhood academy that South Side Community United For Change hosted. It was one of several goals that came out of a neighborhood academy. We told her about Western Avenue when it was a business district in its heyday. And we said, as the councilperson, would you help us get it fixed up? I'm not taking credit for it. What has bothered a lot of people is the delay. Okay? It's the same project that the city undertook with Maine and, similar, Maine and University when they did the tabletop. And they've done subsequent projects all around the city. None of them, none of them have taken five years. None of them. And, and we have not been able, I mean, there's been one delay after the other. Yes, COVID happened last year, but the city went ahead with Sheridan in Nebraska despite COVID. The governor, Pritzker, went ahead with his $45 billion rebuild Illinois program despite COVID. We saw the Illinois Department of Transportation out repaving War Memorial last year despite COVID. So my question was, during a time we needed to see economic progress, we needed to see people with jobs, why would you kick us to the curb? And, and when she came to us, she said, we were on a conference call, it wasn't like a, I know you all been waiting, waiting and waiting, how would you feel? Her thing was, it ain't going to happen this year. It ain't going to happen. So we felt like we, our, our concerns were not, were not respected. People have been wanting to see some sort of economic redevelopment in our community for years. And we thought she would be the leader that would champion that.
Thank you. Councilperson Moore, would you like to respond?
Thank you. As Ms. Jackson said, that meeting happened in 2016. You heard me say earlier, in 2013, I talked to the businesses on Western and they are the ones who brought it up initially. And going to the community as I do, but before we do anything, before I do anything, I talk to the people in the community to make sure that's what they want. And so, yes, three years later, after the businesses that already told me what they wanted on Western, but that was the businesses. My efforts are for the community. And when it was confirmed, I had already had the public works looking into what it would take to get it done. Let me give you an example. Let's say you're at the grocery store and you're four people behind the first person, the person that's being checked out. How would you feel if somebody cut the line because they felt like they deserved to cut the line? would you feel if somebody cut the line because they felt like they deserved to cut the line? You'd probably get a little bit hot. Those projects that continued were in line. Nothing cut the line. Nothing got ahead of Western. Everything was completed in the order it was supposed to be completed. Thank you.
Thank you. Are we going to be done? Or can I? Okay. Can I or no? All right. So I wanted to give the audience, I've got some specific questions for both of you. Much of our discussion tonight, you've spoken about dialogue, which I think is very critical for Peoria. I've heard that when you want to know how to get something done, you ask the people, who it impacts. So you've had dialogue. Over the course of your campaign, I'm sure you've had quite a bit of.
Prior to.
And prior to. So let's talk about, you know, with your dialogue, what's in your plan that results from that dialogue? And as a leader, how would you bring that about with your colleagues who may not agree with you or decide to put funding where you want it?
Well, listen, I don't expect everybody to agree, but it's important to come to the table. Okay? And so we have decided that it's necessary, as I said, to include the residents. It's necessary to include investors. It's necessary to include leaders. Everybody should have a voice at the table. And I'm not the kind of person who feels like, if you don't live in this district, you have no business down. You know, I'm not like that.
And since you've had that dialogue, what's in your plan that relates, that you've heard, that you want to bring about?
Well, people want to see our community redeveloped. And we have decided, you know, you get committees together, you put out notices, you let people know. We know what needs to be done. But we want to make sure that the appropriate individuals all have a part to play. And I hope whoever's the first district representative, I hope we can work together. Because at the end of the day, there's so much work that needs to be done. It's probably going to take two or three lifetimes to get some of the things done, that we need done. But we do know that we want our roads fixed up. We know that we want housing in our community, new affordable people. Not everybody wants to move north of War Memorial. I've got nothing against it. But taxes are a little bit cheaper in other areas, you know? And so we have people who, I talked to a resident the other day who lived out on Sterling, left the South Side, but decided she wanted to come back because she loves the South Side. So we have people who want to see it happen. They don't care who's leading. They just want to have a little voice in it, a little say-so. So that's the plan, to bring people together and to move forward in trying to get our, get the federal dollars, get a strategic plan together. Obviously, South Side Community United for Change represents a lot of people. There'll be a, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Player at the table as well.
Thank you. Councilperson Moore, we've heard a lot about what you've done so far. And clearly, as we mentioned, you know, as it's been mentioned, things don't happen overnight. So now you have provided us with a list of things that you have done in the community. What is your, day one, if you were to be given another term, what does that look like? What will you put, what's in your strategic plan that you think the citizens from District One and across Peoria need to know?
Well, first, I'd like to acknowledge what Ms. Jackson said a few minutes ago. She said, and I quote, "It might take two or three lifetimes for us to get where we need to be." Yet I'm being asked to get it done in one term. So just keep that in mind. She indicated, it's going to take a while. And so thank you for acknowledging that. These things don't happen overnight. It's like going to the grocery store with $100 in your pocket, and then the cashier rings up all your groceries. It comes to $160. Well, guess what? You're putting stuff back, stuff that's going to have to wait till the next time. And so thank you for acknowledging that it's going to take maybe two or three lifetimes, but I'm hoping not to, it won't take that long. Specifically, I've asked the community, the South Village Revitalization Plan includes a MacArthur Corridor Comprehensive Plan and South Village Implementation Plan. And that's just the South Side. So when you say, what am I going to do on day one? I'm going to do on day one the same thing I've been doing since I've been in office. I've been listening to the community. I've been engaging them when I go to the grocery store, when I go to church. A lot of people stop me in church and talk, we talk about things going on in the South Side, in church. They talk to me at the doctor's office, too. That's kind of weird, but okay. But anytime I'm outing about, I'm talking to people about what they want. What's in this plan is not what I thought would be great, or what the Black architects, the Black and Hispanic architects that I brought in for this, it's not what they thought was great. They surveyed South Side Community United for Change and every other organization around to find out, what do you want in this plan? You told them, this is my playbook now. This is what you said you wanted, and this is what I'm going to follow. And each time, every single month at the SCUC meeting, I'm going to give you an update. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I ask one more question? So as an advocate for our children here, I think, you know, we've got some, you know, some work to do on behalf of our babies. And so I'd like to start with you, Candida Jackson. What would, what will you do for our babies? What about our children?
Well, I am a, right now, I'm in my second career. I'm a substitute teacher at Roosevelt, looking to become certified in special education. And, you know, these children are paying attention because they've been asking me, what are you, what are you doing? You know what about the billboards? It's important for families, for children to see progress in their community. It's not until they begin to see roads being repaired, alleys being light, lit up, the tire dumping ceasing, structural improvements that they will begin, oh, 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 somebody cares. Right now, you know, there's the perception that nobody cares. So I tell them, I had conversations with two young people today in their 20s, and I applauded them for their interest. I said, hey, listen, you guys, keep it going because you all are going to have the patin' shortly. So I would encourage you to engage your other friends to get involved in your community, whether it's through a Neighborhood Association, whether it's through SCUC, we are looking to recruit young people, whether it's through the South Side Litter Patrol. You know, we all can play a part. So I think it's necessary to implement my action plan, engage the rest of the community, pull them into the process. As they begin to see progress occurring, then people get excited because they, oh, something's happening. And it's easier to get involved, get them involved the next time. So that, we're at that point now. Right now, folks just haven't seen a lot. And some of them are apathetic. And so I think it's important to do, take advantage of federal dollars and begin the infrastructure improvements.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilwoman Moore, what are you going to do for our babies?
What have I done for our babies? A lot. One of the simplest things was just bringing a water feature to Harrison Homes. The kids used to come down to the riverfront when we had the water fountain out there, and they have the kids playing out there. And then that thing broke. And a lot of the neighborhood areas are closely adjacent to someplace they can go and get wet. It wasn't the city of Peoria that put that splash pad at Harrison Homes. It was my relationship with Illinois American Water. They called me and said, we want to do this for someplace in your, in your district. Where do you recommend? I recommended Harrison Homes because they deserve to be able to go and get wet, just like every other kid during the summer. Folkress Street, I talked about how we replaced Folkress Street. After 17 years of waiting, and our babies walking through standing water, Carl Cannon called me and said, Denise, this is a shame before God. This young man was in elementary school when that came up in 2001. I wasn't living here. But when I got on council, I got it done. And that's why they found him and took his picture, because it's beautiful now. Go check it out. That's for our babies. In Martin Luther King Junior Park, you'll see a firefighter-themed equipment. I had to get ahold of Bonnie Noble to spend money that the city said, here, here's some money out of TIF. Let's bring some new playground equipment there. Because when I would take my grandson there when he was small, that equipment was not in good shape. Playground equipment. But even more important, there are two cultural murals around town, one on MacArthur, one on Western, that depicts African-Americans as successful. You can't be what you can't see. We need to make sure our children understand they can be anything they want to be.
Thank you. I would ask one more, but I'm going to go. Okay, can I go one more? Okay, wonderful. Good. I got one more question. All right. So you've mentioned that you've been a part of a number of organizations, the Neighborhood Community Association, you've been the president, you say, for 10 years?
I am president.
Right. And SC?
SCUC, South Side Community United for Change.
So tell me, what have you done for those organizations that you can boast of, that you'll then bring to the broader, the broader district?
Well, I've fundraised. I've helped raise a little over $10,000 through a couple of walks. And then we have our annual fall fundraising. So I've done a lot of fundraising. I've also participated. We collaborated with Common Place a few years ago to hire young people to, and we, they were paid to go around and pick up litter. So I was a chaperone. We had the South Side Litter Patrol. I'd like to see things like that come back. We've also collaborated with the Dream Center. I brought, oh, I don't know, 70 or 80 kids to the Great American Cleanup, you know, things like that. I've also, you know, I've worked when the city has asked us to come out to pick up trash. You know, I do everything that puts me out there. And, you know, it's funny, when I used to work at the TV station, people, you're the news lady, you're picking up trash. I said, this is my neighborhood. So if I can pick up trash, you know, the message is, you live here, too. Come join me. So we want to bring, continue to bring programs like that, to get our young people involved, to give them a sense of ownership and participation.
Okay. Participate, I'm sorry. Councilperson Moore, you are a part of five, you're the liaison for five commissions, you mentioned. Can you list those for us and let us know what has been done in those areas to benefit the district as well as the city?
Well, the one that mostly benefits the city, not just the district, but all of these groups tell me that they're working in '05 because that's what's on their documentation. The CDBG Public Service Commission is a liaison that I work on, that I serve on. And we provide funds to Habitat for Humanity, excuse me, not Habitat for Humanity, the Boys and Girls Club.
Carver Center.
Carver Center, Carver Center gets a lot of money. The Center for Prevention of Abuse, the various hospitals that come to us looking for funding, Common Place, Neighborhood House. These organizations receive funds from the city in order to effect change in our community. And so those are the organizations that I continue to assert for them to get funds. Another commission that I serve on is called the Tourism Reserve Fund. Funny thing about the Tourism Reserve Fund, you've probably never heard of it, have you? You probably haven't. Because, and it's unfortunate, because that organization gives you money to have an event. So let's say your church organization, your church wants to have a big convention, and you're going to bring 1,000 people to Peoria. Do you know that this organization can give you money as a grant to help offset some of your expenses? A lot of folks don't know that. I started the Affordable Housing Commission, separated it from the Fair Employment Commission as a result, because of wanting to see more of our folks working and better affordable housing. Those two things are very important because we don't have a lot of housing coming on the South Side. What you see in the North Valley and the Warehouse District, that is private money being spent. The city's not spending money on that. That's private money. That could happen on the South Side, too, if private money wanted to come here. But one of the things they tell me that keeps them from coming here is the lack of infrastructure that we're working on now.
Thank you. And so I've been asking all these questions. I have eaten into both your closing arguments time. And so I will graciously ask your forgiveness and give each of you one minute to respond. We'll start with you, Candida Jackson.
Okay. Well, as I said, I have spent a lot of time talking to people. And I, as I said, the difference between myself and Councilwoman Moore is that I expect to respond to the needs and wants of the community. I think it's important. I have nothing against serving on commissions and councils, but we have some real serious infrastructure problems that need to be addressed immediately. And I'm committed to doing that, not just myself, but other individuals we've been talking to. So I am ready to work. I see this as the next progression from what I've been doing. I think that I am a consensus builder. I've been very successful in bringing different groups together. I know we don't always agree, but it's important to have conversations. It's important to collaborate. It's important to work together for the betterment of our community, and I'm committed to doing that.
Thank you. Councilperson Moore?
Thanks for having me today. What Ms. Jackson described is exactly what I've been doing for eight years. And the only reason why you see from my website all the things that have happened here is because I had to get five other council members to agree that it was a good idea for this to happen on the South Side and in the North Valley, in the downtown, in the Warehouse District. We are one community, and I've convinced my colleagues that if they let the South Side go, it's going to bring the whole city down. So it's not about what side that you're on. It's about us as a community pulling in the same direction to get to where we are trying to go. Together, everybody accomplishes more. Everyone's heard that TEAM acronym. And that's what I've done for eight years. My website lists all the things, well, not even all of them, most of what's been accomplished. So when you hear someone say, oh, there's nothing happening on the South Side, don't believe your own eyes, not their lies. Thank you. Vote Denise Moore, April 6.
Thanks to both of you.
Thank you.
I appreciate your insights this evening. And it has been a privilege to serve as moderator for this event this evening. I will turn the town hall, turn it over to our town hall co-coordinator, Sherri Cannon, for her final thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you so much. On behalf of Collaborative Peoria and the Munder Gathering, we would like to take this opportunity to thank our moderator, Dr. Don Jeffries, who did an amazing job.
Yes, she did.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And we also want to thank both of the candidates, Councilwoman Moore and candidate Mrs. Denise Jackson. Public service is, is a hard job. And a lot of times, it's a thankless job. So we applaud both of you for stepping out boldly, running for this office, and we wish both of you luck.
Thank you.
We also would like to thank the Peoria Housing Authority and Chairman Carl Cannon for allowing us to use the Frank Campbell's Community Center. And we especially like to thank you, our live and virtual audience, for spending your evening with us. It cannot be stressed enough how important voting is. We saw in the latest local primary that a candidate won by just two votes. We also are seeing that in 43 states around this country, state legislators are proposing 253 voting suppression bills to make it harder to vote. Your vote is your voice. Do not let anyone take it away. And early voting is going on right now at the Election Commission. And Election Day is Tuesday, April 6, 2021. So please vote. And we also ask you to come back tomorrow night. We'll be here, same time, same place, 6:00 PM, with candidates from Peoria City Council, District Two. So thank you and good evening.